I always wanted to do that. Once. Good evening, my name is Bob White. I'm the Secretary of this Board, but I guess I'm the ranking member tonight. Our Chairman is out of town and we are without a Vice Chair for now. She has resigned and moved to Tennessee, I think. First order of business is going to be the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations from the floor?
Make a motion that we nominate Bob White as the Vice Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? I would caution you then that we're going to follow this with a nomination for Secretary. Been moved and seconded that Bob White become the Vice Chair. All in favor? I guess that's good enough. All right then, are there nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Phil.
Second.
Any discussion? Phil, are you willing to take the job?
Sure.
All right. All in favor? Well, that was nice and easy. Phil, three. Okay, the next item is the minutes from August 10th. No, can't. Can't be August 10th.
Yeah, it was. I think.
Oh yeah, we're in September. I'm sorry. We are in September. Okay. Let's have a quick review and see now the way we've got a lot of hearings to do.
I make a motion that we accept the August 10th Planning Board meeting.
Second that.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. The next order of business is, and we'll take these in the order of a packet, final review of the site design application from Pioneer Realty to regrade land and accommodate storage of building material. We have been over this before, once or twice. We need to go down the formal checklist of the site design review. However, before we do that, is there anyone here that wishes to make any comment? Seeing none. And I would say that I was pleased when this packet came in that it was one of the most complete site review packets we've ever seen. Kudos to whoever put it together.
I think Denise did.
Oh.
This site design?
The packet.
The site review, no, this site review application.
Oh, for this?
This application. I think somebody in Collinstadt did.
Well, I think probably Sam did.
Maybe.
Okay, we have some that are in A. Do we start, we start at?
Start at A.
At A, right. We've done the preliminary already.
Because this is the final site.
This is the final. And hopefully, everybody will stick around and sign this thing if it meets the approval of the Board. Today is the 14th. Conformance with comprehensive plan, yes, no, or not applicable?
Yes.
Man says yes. Any discussion? Have traffic issues been addressed and are they satisfactory?
I would say yes.
They've had vehicles going in that same entrance for a long time. Yep, yep. Site access?
Yes.
All right, here a yes. Any discussion? Parking and vehicle circulation?
Yes.
Pedestrian circulation?
I would say yes. You know the, it's not for pedestrians, but.
Right. I haven't walked on it yet. Site conditions. I think the site conditions are satisfactory. Been watching that site since they started.
Yeah. Based on all the committing those issues from the state.
Oh yeah, the DEP, yeah. Covered it anyway. I don't think, personally, I don't think open space is applicable. Sanitary sewage is not applicable.
Correct.
Nor is water.
Correct.
Emergency vehicle access is applicable and I think it's covered. Waste disposal is covered by the overall site. Well.
Is it applicable?
I don't see where it's an issue. The vegetation between the water and the lot completely takes care of that sight line. And so you've got one neighbor to the west, but I haven't heard anything from them. Is anyone else? No. All right, I think it's satisfactory then. Natural areas, I don't think are applicable. Exterior lighting, well. Did you have lighting planned? Are you going to illuminate that at night or?
We'll probably put some lighting on the building shining over there. We don't have it currently.
But not too high up into the neighbor's window so far.
Not a direct light.
We okay with that?
I think so.
I'm fine with that. Stormwater management.
I think it's gravel for initially and pavement.
Scrabble, yeah. Yep. It seeps into the river eventually.
Yeah.
Erosion and sediment control appears to me to be satisfactory.
And I think that again would have been covered by the DEP.
Yep. The buildings, well, not applicable. There's no building there. Existing landscaping. Basically replaced.
Does it sound like it's being altered or?
No. Infrastructure is not applicable. Nothing happened to the infrastructure.
No advertising.
No advertising. Design relationship to the site and surrounding properties is certainly appropriate. Sandy fistas in areas, not applicable in my opinion. Utilities, I don't think is applicable. Certainly not mineral exploration. General requirements, unless anybody has any exceptions, I'm going to say yes. Phosphorus export, well, they're not fertilizing gravel. So I'll give that a satisfactory. Does everyone agree with those check marks?
I do.
May we have a motion?
Maybe we approve it. Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Will the members please make sure they stick around so we can sign this original tonight? Thank you.
Thank you.
One down.
Bob, just a quick question.
Yes.
That, I think I put in the application gravel and eventually pavement. I don't need to come back before the Board to get pavement access.
I do not believe you do because it's already covered by this approvals.
It was in the application. I floundered.
Yeah. If it hadn't been in the original, then we need to know about it, but it was. So we should be covered.
Thank you. For a second. Troy's not here. Can we pass him? Do him last in case he shows up?
Well, I don't know. We can, we can put Troy last on the next two. I don't think we even need him for the York Street thing, but I'd certainly like to have him here for the Glen Street.
You know.
But if you, if the.
I would agree with Matt, just that there's people.
He's usually here.
The Board prefers we can go to item four.
Yeah.
Which is the request from Mr. Belanger to rezone a portion of property, tax map eight, lot 29, from R1 to R3. I think we all know the issue here. There are horses being kept on the property. I guess it was kind of a mix-up or a kind of a bit of haste to put them there before things got settled. We, all the adjacent land to the south is R3. No one has expressed interest in developing that currently zoned R1 land into residences. This is at least the third time it's been before the Board. Is there anyone in the audience that needs to comment on this?
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Is this spot zoning?
We don't believe so because it's contiguous with a large R3 area already.
Then it butts in R3.
And it butts in R3. If it was, R1 all the way around it, if you wanted to take this little section and call that R3, that would be spot zoning. But since it's contiguous with an R3 area, we don't believe it is.
But it's not going to be contingent on when you change the tax maps?
Well, it's our intention to recommend this change to the City Council anyway.
It has to be approved by the Council in order for it to take effect.
It's just that we would like to ask the City Council to deal with it on its own, standalone, because it may take some time before we finish the rezoning plan for the whole city.
Do you know when that might be?
Well, we thought it was going to be this fall, but I can't guarantee it. We've made a lot of progress. We've made a lot of progress. We've identified, at a workshop, this is okay to say this now, we identified all or most, if not all, of the areas that we want to redesignate. And we have addressed a lot of the allowed use issues, but we have not finished with that. We have to finish the allowed use package before we can send the whole thing to, well, actually, hold a hearing and then send the whole thing to City Council. I suspect that hearing will happen sometime this fall. I certainly hope so. It's been with us too long.
Now, Bill's not here. Do we have to move to make his letter part of the record or is it just?
It wouldn't bother me to do that. That way, it's in, it's in the record.
I move it becomes part of the record.
I'll second that. Hi, Pen. All right. This is part of the record. So I'll see. So the procedure, as I understand it, is if we, the Board, feel that something needs to be rezoned, we ask, Denise, don't slap me if I use the word wrong, we ask staff to draft a letter to the City Council naming our, listing our reasons for asking for the rezone, and then it goes to City Council and they either approve or do not. In this case, I guess the reasons are it's contiguous with an R3. There has been no neighbors objecting. In fact, many neighbors have endorsed it. It's land that probably never will be used for development. It might as well be used for allowed uses in R3, which in this case is housing horses. That doesn't mean it'll always be that way, but that's the way that wants to be now.
Is there any neighbors parcel here? I mean, we've, I mean, we've only heard Bill's input with regards to saying that the neighbors have said everything is okay, but obviously, they haven't showed for anything.
They haven't. She couldn't come to any of the meetings. And, well, as an aside, my wife and I know one of the neighbors and we know they're not upset.
Is this something that should have come in front of the Board to begin with for an approval?
Yes. Yes.
And I guess my question would be, would you still have to pay those fees retro?
It wouldn't have been, there's no fees associated.
No fees for that, or?
Well, there's, I mean, there's a fine that's saying, could be adjudged if not more than $100 a day.
Oh, yeah. So.
Is that what you were referring to?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, should we still somewhat hold people accountable for doing things like that, just to make sure? I'm not saying fine him, I'm just saying.
Well, the Board doesn't have the authority to issue fines.
Correct.
That's up to city officials.
I don't want to fine him. I'm just saying.
And I think we've gone around the horn enough on this about how Mr. Belanger should have done things differently than the way he did them. But I am, I'm with Mr. Hunter here of the opinion that we might as well fix this problem and move forward rather than look back and make a big stink.
I agree with that. I just have to prevent those things or educate people so it doesn't continue to happen or.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, I hate to say make this person an example, but if we continue to go through and just say, okay, well, yeah, you know, he understands now that he's done it this way without, you know, anything behind it, then people are going to continue to do it. You know, there's, there's no, I guess there's no easy way to put it, you know, he got caught with his hand in the cookie jar. He needs to make sure that he follows proper procedure in order to make it happen, regardless whether the fact that we think that we should just fix it and move on, because that doesn't stop problems like this from happening in the future.
No, nothing will stop them from happening in the future, and I don't think we as a Board can actually do anything to prevent that from happening in the future. If it starts to become rampant, then yeah, we can, we can encourage city employees to start bringing out the ruler on their knuckles.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's obviously rampant if you look at agenda items four and five, because both of these are things that are being done.
Not five.
Well, five, in theory, is under the assumption that we would make the change prior to, you know, I mean, we have two, we have two basic identical options here versus, versus number two, which is a prime example of how it should be done.
And four, pardon me, but in four, yes. The, we got the horse, no pun intended, before the cart.
Exactly.
Five, I don't think has anything to do with it.
Well, it's, her, her plane was contingent upon us making a change.
That's correct. She hasn't taken any action.
I mean, it's, it's similar in, in the request.
When, when, if we recommend to the Council that they rezon, that they rezon for the horses, that doesn't preclude the part of the city that's responsible for enforcement actions from taking an enforcement action.
No.
They probably won't because it's not practical, but we're not the, we're not the army of the city that enforces this stuff, which is just approve it or not approve it based on, you know, our normal criteria.
I don't want to get all hung up on whose wrist is going to get slapped.
Exactly. So, I'd like to make a motion that we take and take tax map eight, lot 29, residential one to residential three, and move it to the City Council for their approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I have more further discussion with regards to whether we're going to consider it personal or commercial use, and how do we define whether it's going to be personal or commercial, because we look at our definition of commercial use, let me see if I can find It says commercials shall include the use of lands, buildings, or structures other than home occupations, intent and result of it, which activities of production of income from buying and selling goods and services exclusive for rental and residential building and dwelling units. I mean, in theory.
There's no buying and selling.
But Bill is receiving compensation for that, and this is the part where I'm not sure who, but who is the sole responsible party to determine whether it's the owner or the renter that needs to come before us with regards to being able to have that kind of use, based on, if it's commercial, it takes planning board approval. If it's livestock, or if it's personal use, excuse me, it says CEO or yes, so I mean.
Use livestock.
So, correct. On a personal use, but that would be a code enforcement approval, am I correct? The way it's written right now.
Or just a plain yes.
Right. But it'd be up to code enforcement. So if code enforcement doesn't approve it, then it doesn't make a difference whether we've changed this or not.
Yeah, well, okay.
This hasn't been approved.
Where are you going with this? Do you have any indication that code enforcement's going to put, put their heels in the ground on this?
I don't know. But that's, that's the thing, is it, it hasn't been approved for that use yet, then us changing the zone is irrelevant at this particular juncture, because there again, we're putting the horse.
You're giving me a circular argument, Phil, and I don't have time for that.
He's just renting, he's renting, renting that land. Bill's, Bill's not engaged in, in anything to have to do with livestock. He's just renting land for people.
Right. Doesn't have any structure on the lot. There's, there's.
And it has to be the owner.
Right, but who do we define as the owner? Is it the renter or is it the property owner?
It's got to be the owner. You got to have an interest in the property, or you got to have a purchase and sale agreement or something.
That's, that's the other part, and we're going to run to this into the next item too, you know, regards to where are we going, what are we using for a definition, because if our definition of commercial use precedes anything that we have on the land use table, then.
Why do you, I'll try to address this one more time. Why do you keep worrying about quote, "commercial use" when somebody, someone is simply renting land to another party?
Because that person is gaining monetary benefit.
But it's not buying and selling, which is part of the definition. Goods and services.
We're discussing this last.
I know, and I, and I got ended around on that, at that one too, but I mean, including the use of land, buildings, or structures, I mean, it's right there. So I mean, we need to determine which takes precedent, our land use table or our definitions then our land use table?
Well, if we have a problem with the definitions, maybe we're going to have to rewrite them. But I cannot believe we're going to spend a lot of time holding this up on a technicality.
Well, I think that we need to. I mean, it's due diligence in order to make sure it's done right versus, you know, just passing it through like, you know, things have been done in the past, which we can't continue to do and continue to be effective in doing it that manner.
Yeah, but the, the due diligence, due diligence varies from circumstance to circumstance.
Right.
If this appears to be a no-brainer solution, it's a different amount of diligence than if this was, if they're, if he's renting it out to say, I don't know, a chemical company.
Right. I guess I just, we need, we need some clarification where we're going to stand with regards to definitions and then how we're going to interpret those moving forward. So Bob, there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is. I'm going to call the question.
Just going to say, just vote it out and if it fails, then we'll discuss it.
All who's in favor of the motion on the floor. It's four. Opposed? All right, Kerry's four to one. All right. Moving on to number five, which I don't think is the same situation at all. To recap for folks, Tammy Belanger wants us to rezon property at 32 Robert Street from R1 to R2 so that she may establish a dog grooming business. She does not intend to live in the residence. She intends to simply have dogs there coming and going. We've seen this one two or three times, we've discussed it two or three times, and I have to remind everyone that in our rezoning work at the workshops, we've taken that entire area and planning to recommend go from R1 to R2. So yes, here's an example of spot zoning until we get a chance to deal with the whole map.
But it's still spot zoning until that map takes effect.
Bob?
Yeah.
When I, when I sent out the notices of this hearing, we included all of the properties, I want to say on the north, north of Sincock Street.
Mm-hmm.
To the Lion's Picnic Round, all the way around to Grove Street, so that we were including.
Everyone who's.
That, that triangular shape out to South Main Street where it would end but to the R2 zone that's presently there. So we did send out direct notifications through the mail to all of the owners of the whole neighborhood, that this hearing would be considering the changing of the zoning from R1 to R2 for the whole neighborhood.
Oh, we're going to try to make that recommendation tonight so it's not spot zoning? I'm, I'm good with that.
The whole neighborhood looks like R2 already.
There's so many multifamily apartment houses, rental units, several large apartment complexes in that zone that should be R2, as they say.
So can we?
So that, that takes away the spot zoning issue.
We don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, no longer spot zoning issue.
It just has to be a motion.
We need a motion.
Is there any public comment?
Any public comment whatsoever? I don't mean to ramrod, yes.
I got to say, I'm a little disappointed because I've been trying to get mine resigned on South Main Street, and you told me that you guys wouldn't want to do it until you get the tax maps. So you won't rezon my little lot, even though you're going to rezon everything in.
You haven't made a formal request then. We've only had a discussion, you know, off the cuff with yours.
Yeah.
If you, if you haven't.
The whole thing was, was that you kept saying, well, we're not going to do spot zoning. We're not going to do.
Well, right now, we're not doing spot zoning either.
Except that's what you've got written here, is that it's spot zoning.
Was that very important?
Yes. Okay, fair enough. I am very disappointed.
Well, I'm very sorry, but we, we haven't been requested to deal with your law on South So our work, what we're doing here is going to be redefining the motion to include that entire parcel as defined by Steve Wentworth. Not a parcel, but a map, a whole section of the city.
It just makes the neighbor homogenous with the uses that are currently.
And everyone, and everyone in that area was notified.
Yes.
And everyone is not here. Okay? That tells us something.
I move that we, that we recommend the Board they rezon that entire area, R2.
Second.
All in favor? Against? Okay. Self, four to one, Kerry. All right, now back to number two. This is an issue where Troy Haney owns a very small lot at 57 York Street, which is the last house on the right, if you're going down York Street, which somehow, when the zoning ramps were drawn a gazillion years ago, that lot got hooked into our industrial And probably should have been R1 to start with. Mr. Haney wants to tear down the existing structure, which looks like it should be condemned anyway, and, and build a proper residence, but in, in order for him to do that, that little parcel needs to be changed from I2 to R1. On the issue of spot zoning, we don't believe that's an issue because it's contiguous with an R1 area. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment further?
I move we make the recommendation.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded to change tax map 28, lot 122, from I2 to R1. And again, all we can do is, when we make this motion, all that's really happening is we are requesting City Council to consider the action.
You know, I hate to back us up, but when we recommended, when we make the recommendation regarding Bill, we gave Denise a list of reasons. We didn't just give him a list of reasons regarding the Robert Street property. We should probably double that today.
Well, he has, Steve has a pretty good list.
Oh, okay. As long as it, yeah.
And I think, I think that that was discussed as what we were going to do at the last meeting, that we wanted to move it as, not just the spot, but the whole thing. I do believe that that is what we discussed.
And that's why I went ahead and enlarged.
I'm glad you did that.
Okay. Just regarding.
Yes, if Steve knows what he's, what he's going to write, we don't have to reiterate it. Well, okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? It's unanimous. That takes care of that one. The only thing left is item three. Troy Haney submitted a site plan some years ago for 82 Glen Street, lot 49A, and in that plan, which was approved, he had eight residential units and spread over four single-story buildings. He has come back and asked that the last two duplexes be converted to one larger two-story building, which would have eight units, bringing the total on the site from eight to 12. Eight was previously approved, now we're going to 12 if we approve of this. This doesn't change the site boundaries, it doesn't. This doesn't change the site boundaries, it doesn't change the egress and exit from the site. The plan we have seen has adequate parking. Personally, I think we can approve the modification, but I need the board's input, as well as any neighbors who may have come tonight to talk about it. Again, I am running under the assumption that everybody near, within rocket shot of Glen Street was notified about this.
Yes, we went up across Berry, whatever the next street over, so every, all of the butters, and then some, so I think we went back probably a couple, couple 300 feet all the way around the property.
Who's got the handle? So, what does the board think? Do we need to...I don't personally think we need to reopen the site plan, but I will defer to the board.
Is there a standard for amending an already accepted site plan?
It treated similarly as a subdivision, so in the site design review or a subdivision review, primarily follows the same criterion as far as the review elements the board should address, and in doing so, that gives us the ability to provide the findings of fact why, board, so same issue, we go down through the list as you did earlier for the Collins project, would be the same review criterion to follow for Troy's redesign of his site design review.
So, we would look at the one we already did and consider if adding four more units negates any of the positive findings?
That should be sufficient. Gives us documentation for the file if there ever were to be a question or an appeal.
All right, I guess the next question is, do we have a copy of that checklist in our packet?
I think...looks like no.
I think we do.
Troy hasn't provided that.
Should we, so he doesn't have to start from scratch, should we table this to the next meeting so he can be here?
That may be advisable.
Would we have to send out another mailing with regards to that as well?
No, being that this meeting, it would be part of the minutes of this meeting, which is merely continuing the fact that the notifications have previously gone out.
Okay, for the record, though, we should mention that Public Works has written a memo saying they have no concerns, the fire chief has written a memo saying he has no The only thing we don't have is the checklist, and so I would entertain a motion to table this.
I move we table it.
And...
I'll second that.
Somehow ask Mr. Haney to bring a copy of the original checklist approved so that we can go over it.
We must have one.
We must have one in our files.
It's like design. It's the same one you just did for...
No, but I want to see the one where the check-offs were on the original.
Yeah, the original.
Site reviews. So that we can say, okay, that was marked acceptable, then is it still now?
You know what, Penny's notes say that it's in the file, but we never signed it back in 2014.
Oh, good. Well, I still think we better take a look at it. So, did someone move that we table this till the next meeting?
I had, and I think Phil started it.
I seconded it. All in favor? It's done. It's tabled. Troy won't be happy with that, but that's life. All right, we are now into five, new business. Have anything to say, Dennis? Okay. Is there any new business to come before the board? Anyone in the audience with new business? Is there any other business? Does anyone know of any new communications? Well, we're down to section eight, public input.
Okay, our confusion is on, I was misunderstanding, I misunderstood probably what I was told about having to make a formal request. When I spoke to the code enforcement, he said he could bring it up to the board, and also one of the council or one of the board members said the same thing, and it never happened, so...
Well, I know that in our workshops, we specifically addressed that section.
Yeah.
And we specifically are planning to move forward with...
I understand that.
Donning it correctly.
I would have made the correct request, because I wanted to get this done before winter this year.
I see.
Because where she is right now, every third day, she has enough water pressure to take a shower. I really want to get that out of her before winter.
Well...
So, it's done, and she'll be there till winter, or till spring, and we'll carry on from there.
Would the board entertain or consider a motion to schedule a hearing on that parcel at the next meeting?
If we can do it, sure.
I'm not objected to that.
I'm not opposed to it.
And that would put them, as far as they're getting zoned, it wouldn't happen until November, but you can still move stuff in November.
It may turn out to be a short-term spot zoning issue.
Well, we're moving everything else anyway, right? That's the precedent that we've set, so...
We could even do that zone.
From Kinnit Church, like you were talking about in Robert's.
You're right, you're absolutely right.
And it wouldn't necessarily be a spot zone if you bring the R3 zone from the west back into South Main Street.
Okay. Can you spend a little time to set up what makes the most sense and then notify the butters?
Sure.
Time for us to have a hearing in the next meeting?
Definitely.
Which will be sometime in October.
Well, I'm reading that correctly.
First, this is Sunday.
Yeah.
It's before 5:12, yeah. Someone make that motion?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay. All in favor? Good, we're going to have a hearing for them.
Okay, thank you. You want the formal...
Would you court me?
I would stop at city office and...
Steve or Penny?
It can be a simple letter, just...
Or email or something.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, reasons pertaining like member of the family wants to take up residence there and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your forbearance. Anything else to come before the board?
Actually, I have one other thing I'd just like to say. I'd like to thank Penny for all the information that she's provided with our last two packets.
Good stuff.
It's made things a lot easier, you know, you've highlighted key points, and thank you for your time with that.
A lot of time and effort, and I can only speak for myself, but I sat down in front of my computer at home, and I went through every page. Before we get away, start with Evan. That paper needs to be signed.
Start at the bottom.
Anything else? I'll intitate in a motion for adjournment.
Second.
In favor? We are done.